Called meeting to order today. Woodland Park City Council, June 4th. Meeting. Suzanne. I'll call.
Mayor Carr?
Yes, 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 yes.
Mayor Protam LeBarre?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
I'm here. Do you also have your phone hooked up?
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Pfaff?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
I am here, 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 here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would everybody stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together? We've got one slight adjustment to the agenda. We're moving 3B up to 3A and 3A down to 3B. All right. This is taking care of a bookkeeping situation. Jason Myers, would you like to lead off, please?
Yes, sure. Thank you. I'll try not to speak too quickly so everybody can understand. As I understand in talking with the mayor, as far as the process for this evening is intended, that we've already had two public meetings on this particular issue, which is the appointment of a council member. There's already been discussions of council. Last meeting, we, in further review of the charter requirements, in order to set this for election, a vote should be taken. Last meeting, if you recall, it was a vote to table. So this is really to just finish that discussion and have a vote on the issue at this time so that we can proceed as appropriate under the charter.
Thank you. We've had a bunch of discussion at two public meetings, so I'm going to call for the vote. Suzanne, would you bring the ballots, please? Are we all ready?
Thank you.
Suzanne, if you would, give us the tabulation and who voted for what. Thank you.
They're just in the order I have them. No special order. Councilmember Pfaff has voted for Stephanie Alfieri. Councilmember Case has voted for Darwin Nakarado. Mayor Protam LeBarre has voted for Darwin Nakarado. Mayor Carr has voted for Stephanie Alfieri. Councilmember Zuluaga has voted for Stephanie Alfieri. And Councilmember Neal has voted for Darwin Nakarado. So we have a 3-3 tie, sir.
Thank you. Per the procedures we talked about last time, we do not have four. And so we've, as per our discussions last time, we'll go to a coordinated election in November with this Teller County. Jason, is that your understanding?
Yes. The way the charter reads is it requires a majority of vote of council to make this appointment. If you fail to make that appointment, which just occurred, you have the option to set it for an election. It can be coordinated or special. We had a lot of that discussion last meeting. It's my understanding that Sue has some additional information about what that election process will look like, if you'd like that now or as a part of her report later. It's up to you.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
I believe that we got that information last time pretty clearly, so I think we all understand.
If you wouldn't mind putting that in your council report, if that's okay with everybody?
I only have one other comment to that, and that is, for those who want to be candidates, can you also articulate what that'll look like for the November elections?
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Are you preferring that she explain that?
No, just when she gives her report, so that the benefit of people's...
I want to make a motion that we move for a coordinated election in November, if I could.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Case?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pfaff?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And, Your Honor, if I could, just as a matter of formality, in order to officially do that, we have to have a resolution. So as I understand the vote, that's the direction council wants to head. We will bring that resolution back as required under the statutes.
Please.
I hate to be repetitive, but that way we can officially start the clock.
Sallie Riley's going to talk about it, a plaque that will sit in City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. I'm actually going to turn this presentation over to Jan Wilson, the chairperson of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, and Councilman Neal, who is the liaison for Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. So if you'll both join us up here.
What I would like to do is just say a few words to explain to the people, actually in the audience, because I'm new in this game, liaison of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, what the award is about. And I'd like to thank Lore, if she's listening, for giving me some talking points, because it's more than just reading what it's about. There are some names I'm also going to mention, so that they get some neighborhood recognition for the hard work on your committee. Okay? First of all, let's talk about what the award is, and I want to be brief. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is a national, it's an affiliate to the National Keep America Beautiful. It's an actual affiliate. And the Keep America Beautiful President's Circle Recognition Award, which is what we're about to pass, is a certificate of good standing and achievement. And specifically, the president's circle affiliates are considered first for grants, showcases, and pilot activities because of having this award. The award honors the completion of Keep America Beautiful requirements, such as an active committee that meets regularly, which is defined as a minimum of quarterly, and advances the mission with legal and ethical integrity and accountability, and the reports on at least one activity to end littering and improve recycling and beautify the community. So that's what the official reason is for the Keep America Beautiful President's Circle Recognition Award. Now with that, I'm going to be very brief, but I don't want to deprive some people that have worked hard. I want to get their names out, so there's recognition. First, we have Jan. Jan Wilson, who's the chairman of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, and all the work she does. But there are some other people that are not here, and I want all the citizens listening to know who they are. Susie Branham, Sarah Horwood, Sue Jenneke, Val Carr was the former liaison. And then we've got a couple super volunteers that I want to especially recognize. Pat Heislop, David Perkins, Sierra Kineman, Dan Sloan, Brian Coaks. And then I'm going to say Sarah Horwood's name twice, because she's done not just what the normal recognized people, but she's done kind of a triple and a quadruple duty, because she has taken on the secretarial role. And then by herself, she has taken on the initiative of conducting a recycling survey and has single-handedly created a recycling directory that will be published. It's in draft, it's being reviewed, we're getting ready to finalize it, and then people will know where the recycling locations are. And there should be four of them. And lastly, she did lead and adopt a spot program. So a little special shout out to Sarah. And with that, Val, I think we're going to do kind of a three-way pass.
I'm very honored and very proud to accept this on the behalf of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. I work with a bunch of really great people, and we just adopted the dog park. So we're going to be picking up poop in place of garbage also. So that's what we do. We pick up garbage and poop. So, thank you so much.
Sally already has it hung up.
I'd just like to say, it's really awesome to hear that Keep Woodland Park Beautiful has adopted the dog park. Back when we were working with Bianca Bryant in establishing a dog park, that was talked about. And I remember Keep Woodland Park Beautiful came up, came to the table and said, "We'll help with that," because that was a concern, was, yeah. Yeah. So I'm glad to hear that, and I think it's a great relationship. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Thank you. Councilmember Case. Too hard, too many years. Our next is an appointment to Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Carr. We have received one application from Charlie Estes to be part of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. There are currently nine openings on that committee. That committee can have between nine and 15 members. And there's one, two, three, there's six people currently on the committee. I don't know, because my back is to the audience, if Charlie Estes is here or if he's on Zoom. Okay, there he is. So he's available. Shall you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Would you like to come up and give a pitch for your candidacy or answer any questions council may have? If you wouldn't mind coming and giving your name and your municipality, where you live, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, I'm a little stiff. I just went back to the gym Tuesday. Actually, I'm here from Godfrey, Illinois. I've been coming out here for about 20 years. Always wanted to retire here. I'm an industrial engineer, just retired a couple of years ago, and here I am. I walk every day, so I want to keep this place beautiful.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you volunteering. Council, any questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to know, you say you walk several miles every day, and you say you see a lot of trash everywhere, and that you want to help pick that up and help clean up around the community. Do you mind if I ask where you regularly walk? I'm just curious as to where...
I'm generally like behind McDonald's, behind like the Chinese restaurant back in there. And I mean, there is a lot.
Yeah.
I've picked up sackfuls, you know, and it just doesn't make a dent.
Yeah, I'm the same way. When I'm out walking around, I tend to pick up stuff, too. Well, thank you for coming forward and volunteering. Appreciate it.
I would actually like to say a few words, because I'm the liaison. We really don't have a great vetting process for all of the boards and committees. This committee is one that's probably, you know, when you're picking up dog poop and trash, there's not a lot of vetting. So I want to take all the pressure off of Charlie. And instead of it being a vetting, I want to bring out a couple things. Well, Kelly, you brought up one thing in here in your application, but you didn't even address it there at the microphone. And I want to make sure you get credit. He has worked with the homeless in the past. So when I look at his application, it's kind of nice to see somebody who takes helping the community seriously. And when I saw that, I was like, you know, who wants to pick up dog poop and trash? Anybody that comes. But he's done it in a more formal setting. So I hope there's a strong endorsement. I know we didn't really get a vet him as much perhaps as we'd like, Jan, at the actual meeting where he was introduced. But I do want to highlight, he has helped with homeless, and he does pick up trash, and is, seems to be a great citizen.
Also, I've never been in jail or prison, but I have been in jail and prison ministries my entire life. So I spent my entire life helping others, and I'm going to continue.
Thank you. That helps us.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Charlie, I just want to say, I've been looking for a trash pickup buddy. So I ride my bike up Blueberry Hill, and it's just a mess up there. So hey, if you want to get to know each other, I'm happy to hang out with a trash bag with you. I'm not on the committee, so that's it.
I don't think so. Thank you, sir, for volunteering. I'd entertain a motion at this point.
I'll move to approve his appointment to the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Suzanne?
LeBarre?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yeah.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
We have another, the next agenda, congratulations, is appointment to Board of Adjustments. Yes, it was tense, I know. You're just on the edge of your seat there. Board of Adjustment, and Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor. We have an opening. We have actually two openings on the Board of Adjustment currently. And we received an application from Jim Rumsey, who was on the BOA as the alternate. So he is applying now to be a permanent member. And then that would leave all regular members filled, except, and there'd be two openings for alternate members. And while Lore has provided me with a couple of stats, this is one of the committees where I'm required to tell you about attendance. Mr. Rumsey has been at every single meeting that the BOA was sworn in and taking his oath of office as an alternate. They had a few that were canceled, but the three that they've had this year, he's been present at all three.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Again, I don't know if he's here, and I apologize.
Mr. Rumsey, I'd appreciate it if you would like to come up and say a few words or, and maybe take some questions from council, if they have any. Your name and municipality, where you live.
My name's Jim Rumsey. Live here in Woodland Park. I've been here since 2018, when I remarried and sold out in Fountain and moved to Woodland Park. During my 18-plus years in Fountain, I was by share on the Board of Adjustments down there for a couple of years. And then moving up here, initially I saw an opening, but I had to wait a year. And I was appointed as an alternate in January. And then when this opening came up for a permanent position, I went ahead and applied for it.
Very good. Thank you, sir. I spent a lot of time on Board of Adjustment before I decided to come on council. And it's an interesting thing. You get to know a lot about the town. I know you know that as an alternate, but I welcome your candidacy here, and thank you for stepping forward. Council, any, any questions? Mr. Zuluaga?
Yeah, Jim, I'm excited that you bring experience. What do you see? You've been waiting for a year. So what do your eyes see that you want to share?
Well, I think, just the way Woodland Park's growing, it's important that, you know, when there are, when there are cases that come before BOA, that all rules and regulations are followed, things like that. Also, one thing, I live in an area where, you know, we have three houses in our cul-de-sac that are all city, but then right across the road, there are six houses, and half of them are county. And I see that, you know, a lot of things, the county doesn't have to stay with, you know, meet the regulations, the city of Woodland Park. And I'd like to see some way, whether through BOA or through planning and commission, to see if we could get some more regulations with county properties that were within the city limits. That way, everybody has the same regulations to follow and keep up with, and things like that.
I'm new as well, but good luck on that.
Well, it's just, as an example, we have a county road that, when it rains real bad, we actually have built a berm to keep, actually, the county road going into the, into our yard, and then mucking all the county road material out of the yard. So we, you know, we've had to literally build a berm to make the water flow properly.
Thank you. Any other?
I'd just like to say, so I am, I am always for limited government and limited regulation and a staunch supporter of private property rights. So where you just said that you all, you came together and built a berm, I challenge you to come up with creative solutions rather than further regulation sometimes. I'd appreciate if you think outside the box that way.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Pfaff?
On that point, too, I share Mayor Protam LeBarre's concern about limited government. When someone comes up to you with a case, comes to the board, and you're sitting on it with a case where there is a dispute, give me a little bit of understanding of the philosophy behind how you approach that.
Well, if we haven't really had any cases with the BOA since I became a member here in Woodland Park, experience from Fountain. The planning commission, of course, we would get our packet three days before our hearing, so we could review it, see what we had, see what the case was. And then we, as a group, would hear both sides, you know, as, as to the regulations or the municipal codes that were needed to be changed. And we would just listen to both sides and take an unbiased approach and make the best answer that we could.
Follow up, when you see those disputes and you run by the code, do you make a determination on if the code is good and any steps that need to be taken that you could advise that would make things better and favor the property owner somewhat?
In one case, we actually did help the property owner and think outside the box as to what the code said down in Fountain, which basically, we helped both parties. And the decision was unanimous to help both, you know, the city of Fountain plus the property owner to come to a resolution and a conclusion to help both of them. So been there and done that. Also, I retired in December of 19, after 40 and a half years in the, what we call the audiovisual and electoral distribution business, both as customer service management and sales management. So always was looking outside the box and always having to look at ways to help customers as well as keep things within the, you know, guidelines of the companies that I work for.
Housemember Case?
Just wanted, I see that you, and you mentioned that you were, served on the BOA for the city of Fountain. How many years did you serve there?
I was on there for 18 months. After my first wife passed in 2016, I decided I needed to fill some of my time and applied for a position for the BOA and was accepted. And then, of course, when I was moving up here, I did have to resign my position from the BOA in Fountain.
Thank you for stepping up.
Mayor Carr, can I ask another follow up?
You bet.
In the 18 months you served in Fountain, approximately, roughly, I know you don't have the numbers in front of you, but roughly, how many times did you vote yourself in favor of the property owner and how often in favor of the city?
Actually, in all cases, relied with the property owner within the regulations of the city of Fountain for their municipal code. And in all cases, we went with the recommendations and with the, with the property owner so that they could complete their project.
Seeing no further comment, I will close. Thank you, sir, for stepping up. I will entertain a motion. Anybody?
I'll move to approve his appointment, Mr. Rumsey's appointment to the BOA.
Thank you. Do have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Neal?
Yes.
Pfaff?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We come to our last item on 3E, Presentation to Annual Audit. Our Finance Director and the city, and Chris Parker of Hinkle &amp; Company, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have Chris Parker here with me from Hinkle &amp; Company, and he will start off the presentation for our annual audit for the year ending December 31, 2019.
Thank you, Emily. Good evening, everybody. I am Chris Parker of Hinkle &amp; Company. And tonight, we're delivering the December 31, 2019 Audit Report. You should all have a copy of it, along with a letter that I'll be covering a little bit later. Basically have three objectives tonight. I'll make them pretty quick. I want to read a short statement from Jim Hinkle, the partner of Hinkle &amp; Company. Then I'd like to discuss a few components of the audit report. We don't get too much into the mathematical details or the numbers, because they belong to management. And then finally, I'll cover that required communications letter. The brief statement from the partner was this. We're running a little bit behind this year, as you may know. There's three reasons why. Your Finance Director is new. She knows she's new. She didn't even have a full year on the job, and then we started auditing her work. So she didn't have any familiarity with the system or data and had to research many issues. Also, your previous Finance Director made some changes to the general ledger account configuration, and that took us some time to understand and correlate that to the new numbers in the general ledger. And then lastly, of course, COVID-19, as you know, a lot of people were locked out of their offices or couldn't get to the data or the systems. A lot of folks were working remotely. All that had an impact on our work as well. Everybody's behind. Jim Hinkle wanted me to point out that at this time last year, we had finished all of our city and county fieldwork for December 31st year in. This time this year, only half of them have even started. So you're not alone. The city of Woodland Park's not alone if you're behind on your financial statements and where you want to be. Many have extended their due dates. With that said, let's, let's cut into the report. We've, we've marked this as draft. We've got to get some of the CAFR information, the introduction, the statistical information, the backs get to come. But if you, if you can just thumb down to page six where it says, page five is financial section, and then page six, excuse me, page six starts out with independent auditors' report. I'd just like to point out a few, a few highlights on this report. If you notice, it's broken down into several sections, report on financial statements. And then the second paragraph, management's responsibility. And I just wanted to point out, as you probably know, management...
Excuse me, Chris. I don't think we're with you. We're trying to all find which page.
Oh, I'm in the very first section of the...
Okay.
Not page six.
Yeah, we don't number the pages of the audit report.
We all went to page six.
It's, I said, if you would just go down to the sixth page, they're not numbered.
Ours are numbered.
It says independent auditors' report. Sorry about that. Did everybody get to that page?
First page after the financial section.
Oh, the first page.
Yeah, it says independent auditors' report. Okay, okay. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to jump ahead. Anyway, this report is broken down into management's responsibility and auditor's responsibility. And as I was mentioning, as I'm sure you know, management's responsible for the preparation and presentation of the financial statements. Our responsibility is covered in the next section. And if you read through that, it talks about performing procedures to obtain audit evidence. Some of those procedures include conducting risk assessments. We interviewed your staff. We performed other audit procedures which consist of substantive testing. That's where we reperform and confirm balances in your financial statements. And then we also perform analytical procedures like, like trend and ratio analysis. We do comparative analysis.
procedures like, like trend and ratio analysis. We do comparative analysis. And then, then we obtain audit evidence. We'll get bank statements. We'll get confirmations from your banks. We'll also get vendor invoices. We'll get approved purchase orders, original source documents like that. And we believe that our audit evidence is sufficient to support our opinion. And the opinion's covered on the next page. Stay right here. And in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city. That's a clean audit opinion. I'd like to also point out, under Other Matters on this page, the Required Supplementary Information. Now, this is other information like the Management Discussion and Analysis. That's the next section here. I'm sure that Emily will cover that. And also, the statistical information that's in your CAFR, those we all, we apply what's known as limited procedures. If you read into the middle of that paragraph, we apply limited procedures. That's trend, ratio, comparative analysis we use on the RSI. That's about it for the audit report. If you, if you thumb past the Management Discussion and Analysis, that's four, six, eight, 10. I want to run down to page 12, which is the Statement of Net Position. Does, does everybody find that Statement of Net Position? Yes, sir, that's it. It's on, it's on page, it looks like this. Can they see that? Statement of Net Position, page 12. And as I mentioned, I don't get too much into the numbers, but I want to, I want to explain what this is. I'm sure you probably already know. It's a snapshot in time. Did everybody get to the Statement of Net Position?
It's to page 12, so you have to go to the second one.
Yep. Yeah, I should have probably said the second page 12. We, we have to renumber the pages. Okay. I'm on the Statement of Net Position, City of Woodland Park, Colorado.
With you now.
I'm sorry?
I'm with you now.
Thank you, thank you. And as, as I mentioned, I don't get too much into the numbers because they belong to, to the Management here. But I just want to point out, this is a snapshot in time of the financial position of the city. It portrays assets in the top third, your liabilities in the middle third, and then there's your net position in the bottom third. And then the columns, the columns portray it by governmental activities, business type activities, which are your, your proprietary funds, your waste and wastewater funds, and water and wastewater. And then also, you have the Component Unit, which I believe is the Downtown Development Authority. And that's, that's the Statement of Net Position. The rest of the financial report, which I'll, I'll go through a few of them, follows that format. Will present you a balance sheet, and then we'll give you an income statement. And if you turn the page, on the next page 13, there is a Statement of Activities on the left column. That's a, this is a comparative analysis of revenue and expenses. And when you get to the bottom of it, that's what adds or subtracts to your net position, whether your expenses exceed your revenue or your revenue exceed your expenses. And then we follow that same format. If you look on page 14, there's governmental funds, balance sheet. And there's a breakdown, same format, assets, liabilities, fund balances. And we fought, we follow this format. There's a reconciliation on page 15 that reconciles the two. And then we follow the same format. Here's page 16 is now our revenue and expenses. Same procedure. We look at your expenses. How do they compare to your revenues? Do they contribute to your net position or subtract your net, net position on page 16? This continues on. Let me get to proprietary funds. Page 18 portrays assets, liabilities, and net position of the proprietary funds, which is the water, wastewater, and the combined. And then on the next page, we have the Statement of Revenues. I'm on page 19 now. This portrays the income and expenses for those proprietary funds, waiter, water, wastewater. And then we also have a Statement of Cash Flow on 20. And then on page 22, there's an illustration there of your trust fund, Iverson Memorial.
Can I stop you for, for just a second?
Yes, please.
That was the one comment. I, I know it's 64 pages and I'm wading through it, but when I got to the Iverson Trust, I could not find a description of what that is used for. So could we add that in the narrative? You did explain what the agency fund is used for, but I could not find the Iverson in the document.
Sure, that's a, we can do that for next year. It's a trust that was set up for an employee that passed away on the job. So it's a memorial trust for that family.
Can we just simply include that so that a reader can, can tell what that fund is since we have fiduciary responsibility for it?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I might add as a question, how is that paid out and on what basis?
May I help, Emily?
Sure, go ahead.
We had an employee at the wastewater treatment plant that was, that lost his life on the job at the wastewater plant. His name was Ken Iverson. And the council at the time, we issued some bonds that are now paid off. And at the time, the council set, he had three small children. And the council set up a trust fund for those three children. And some of them were in the, were in the form of purchasing some of those bonds that were issued that have now matured. And then they also set aside some cash for the, for his wife, if, as long as she did not remarry. That was invested, and the, the proceeds of that paid out to her based upon an agreement. And the, the intent of the money set aside and the bonds that were purchased for the children were to pay for their education when they reached age. And so that's the, that's the background on that and, and why that's set up the way it is.
Thank you. That, that really helps me. It's just, I saw what it was, and I kept flipping around trying to get some detail. So you don't even need to go to that level, just a very, very, very brief, because it is a sad subject, but just so that the reader, when they go through it, knows, oh, I know what this is for. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions.
You're welcome.
Let's take a look at the footnotes. That's the basic financial information. That MDNA has a lot of good comparative analytics in it. I encourage you, I'll take a look at that. The, the footnotes, I'm starting on page 23. Let me just go through them. Footnote one discusses the city's significant accounting policies, measurement focus, and describes some of the funds. And I believe we can easily add something there about that other fund if it's, if it's not in there. Footnote three is probably the next most significant. I'm on page 28 of the footnotes down at the very bottom right. This is an illustration of your cash, how it's broken out by petty cash, cash deposits, investments, and then by, by fund activity, trust fund, agency fund, component fund, unit. Probably the next most significant footnote is on page 32. There's, there's an illustration there of your capital assets, excuse me, broken down in the top half of the page by governmental activities and in the bottom half by the business type activities. Remember, those are water and, and wastewater. Probably the next most significant is on page 34, 33, I'm sorry, 33 and 34 begins a discussion of the debt of the City of Woodland Park. And we have a typical four-column portrayal there. Beginning balance, was any added, what the payments and what the ending balance and what's due in the year. I'm sorry, five, five columns, one, two, three, four, five. And then that continues on, broken out by governmental activities and business type activities on page 34. Then we get into some budget type information on page 40. This information, as you know, can be useful to the, to the council for budget decisions. That continues on. Page 43 is significant. Page 43 is a breakout of what's the non-major funds. We've got grants, culture and regu, I'm sorry, culture and recreation, stormwater management, conservation trusts, lodging tax, and then all the totals for those. And it's in that same format. We always give you a balance sheet, and then we give you an income statement or revenue and expenditures on the next page. Let me see what's probably next most, pages 45 through 50 are budgets. And then, lastly, on page 51, here is an accounting for the agency fund, the youth pass, historical society assets, and how they've changed in the past year. That's pretty much it for my recap of the financial statements. Are there any questions for me on the financial statements? Okay, let's, let me cover the letter. We have to, auditing standards require that we communicate to you if we encounter certain situations while we're out here conducting the audit. And that's, that's what this letter does. If we don't encounter those situations, we're required to communicate that as well. And that's what this letter does. If you take a look at the, it starts out with our responsibility under generally accepted accounting, auditing standards. It goes into our engagement letter and as part of our audit, how we reviewed those internal controls. And we did consider the city's internal controls over financial reporting. I mentioned that earlier. We confirmed bank accounts, interviewed personnel, weighted through purchases, stuff like that. But if you look at accounting estimates on the second page, this is kind of important. We look at, depreciation's a big one. How quickly an asset can depreciate, and those, those accounting policies on what will be capitalized, things like that. We took, take a look at those. The next paragraph, Corrected and Uncorrected Misstatements. There's an attachment of some relatively minor adjustments we made along the way. We discussed those with Emily. These are routine in nature. Let's see what else. Disagreements with management near the bottom third of the page. We had no disagreements with management here. The next paragraph, difficulties encountered, we had none. Other than the COVID-19, we had to work remotely. Our team would have come up a little bit more. I think we were here in January, and that was about it. We had to do everything else remotely. And then lastly, on the, on the, the very bottom of the second page, Management Consultations with Other Independent Accountants. Of course, you're entitled to get a second opinion. We care about that, and we like to know if that's happening. Into our knowledge, there were no such consultations with other accountants. Right of other issues. Emily was very cooperative, as was the rest of the staff, especially considering the COVID-19 crisis and pandemic. We had to work remotely for the bulk of this work. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions or comments from me?
Thank you, sir. I, I note you have your adjusting entries on the last two pages.
Yes, sir. They're relatively minor.
Right.
Nothing significant or material. Yes, sir.
Oh, any other questions? Done. Thank you.
Thank you all. I enjoyed the town. It's a great town. Really lovely.
I'd just like to comment that I do appreciate seeing the AJEs that you provided, because that gives me some great insight. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
We've got a couple interested council people in accounting, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Yes, you can go. Thank you. Have a safe drive. Okay, I just wanted to follow up with a couple highlights from the Management Discussion and Analysis portion. So you'll note that the UFBR, the Unrestricted Fund Balance Reserve for the General Fund ended at 22%. So that is about at 1.9 million. So it's 5% higher than what was estimated in the budget, significantly greater than the 17% council goal. General Fund revenues were approximately 541,000 or 5% higher than projected. And then the General Fund expenditures and transfers were lower than the final budget by approximately 150,000 or 2%. And this is due to, you know, conservative spending and then also lower inflation. So those are just a couple highlights I wanted to mention. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. We will study this and take it under consideration. Any questions for our City Treasurer?
I'd just like to point out that, because sometimes numbers speak volumes, the unrestricted unassigned fund balance or our savings in the general fund increased almost $300,000 over last year. That's significant. So thank you for the hard work, staff and council.
Thank you for pointing that out, Council Member Case, because, yeah, it was exciting to see that, for sure. All right. There are no further questions.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda. We did one correction. We're on to the consent calendar. We have two items. I think you probably want to take them individually. Is that correct, Suzanne?
If council desires, if they're willing, we can take both minutes.
Okay.
In one motion. And that's all we have, is the approval of the, I'll just read it into the record, approval of the May 19th special meeting minutes and the May 21st regular council meeting minutes.
Thank you. Council, any discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 19th special meeting and the May 21st regular council meeting as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
House Member Case, second. Suzanne?
Path?
Yes.
Zulawaka?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
We're down to public comments on items not on the agenda. I have nobody who signed up for any, but if you've got some comments on something that's not on the agenda, hello? Please raise your hand. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Just one, one chat notification.
I don't see.
That chat?
Okay.
Okay, 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 okay. Got it, got it, got it.
All right, thank you. Seeing, seeing no volunteers for public comment on items on the agenda, we'll go to unfinished business. There is none. We're on item eight, ordinances on initial posting. Our Planning Director, Sally Riley, has left the building.
She's probably on her way.
Oh.
She is.
Sorry. Wrongly accused. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This is the first reading for an ordinance that extends the moratorium for us to study the municipal code as it relates to the single-family uses in multifamily zones. Last October, council approved the initial moratorium for nine months. The Planning Commission has been working very diligently on this task. And due to COVID and scheduling issues and the time that Planning Commission has met, actually nine times, to discuss this topic. So we would like for you to extend the moratorium for another six months to January 26, 2021. And certainly, if we get completed before that time, then the moratorium will expire or end. And this, for the new members, is very narrowly focused on a very specific residential use in two of the multifamily zones. It impacts maybe a half dozen sites in our community that are zoned and undeveloped at this time. So I don't anticipate that there will be any issues with future potential developments. With that, I would ask that this be approved on first reading and set the public hearing on June 18.
Thank you. Council, questions? Council, questions?
Quick question. How, what's the approximately entire acreage of the, of the affected zones?
Off the top of my head? I can't.
Are we talking tens or are we talking?
There are various sizes.
There's like four.
I'm gonna guess maybe about thirty acres.
I just wanted to bring something up really quick. Jason, last time I recused myself because people are upset with my last name with this issue, so I did not vote. Is it all right if I just remain seated and continue to recuse myself?
If you'd like to, I would point out just for the record, this particular item isn't geared at any particular property owner or any particular people or uses or otherwise. It's very specific to, just putting a pause on things, but if you don't want to vote, that's your prerogative.
Yeah, just a moratorium.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I know that, but the public didn't care last time. So, I, I'm gonna just continue to recuse myself from the issue.
So, Sally, I have a question. So, I heard you say that there, this impacts six sites that are not being in consideration of development right now? Is that correct?
That are currently undeveloped, but we have not had any inquiries on those six sites for this single-family use.
And are there any in the works now with this issue?
No. Does not affect any current applications.
Any other council questions? Seeing none, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Is a public hearing. Does, I don't have anybody scheduled on this particular one, but if somebody is wanting to speak up, just raise your hand.
Sorry, mayor, this is initial posting.
But it says public comment, so.
May be taken, yes.
Seeing none, I'll close public comment and move to recognize. Final questions? I guess we're done with our questions.
No, I have a question, actually. So, you're gonna, if, if you're able to move more quickly through the process than the full six months requires, you're just gonna, do you have any planned updates or when will we know if, if things are moving more quickly?
You will know when it comes before, the amendments to the code come before you in a public hearing and you are the final authority to approve those amendments.
So, it's not a progress report, you're just, when you come to the amendments, then you're moved forward? Correct?
So, we are going to have a joint city council and planning commission work session next week, next Thursday night. And then, once the planning commission and the council are on the same sheet of music, then we move into the public hearing portion and obtain community input on the proposed amendments. That's first done with planning commission and then with city council with the final ordinance. At the end of that, then the amendments go into effect and this moratorium can be ended.
Council, any deliberative discussion at this point? None? Thank you. I'll close that and entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance thirteen seventy-nine, series twenty-two, on initial posting and set the public hearing for June eighteenth, twenty-two.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Council member Neil, second. Suzanne?
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar? Thank you. Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Thanks. So, we'll see it again on June eighteenth. We moved to item nine, public hearings. There are none. We have new business. The WAC reopening and our director, Cindy Keating, please come forward and give us an update, please.
Thank you. We also have Ryan Squires, our aquatics manager, here with us tonight. He is going to be my PowerPoint presenter for me. Good evening, Mayor Carr and city council. Wanted to tell you that today, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment opened personal recreation. What that includes is parks, playgrounds, outdoor sports facilities, organized sports, gyms, rec centers, and indoor and outdoor pools. We have been planning for this day since the day we were closed on March seventeenth. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share our plan with you. And once, do we have the PowerPoint? Well, you also have it in front of you in your packet as well to follow along. So, our facility, our plan starts with our facility hours being limited and that the facility will remain locked at all times. We'll have signage asking our patrons to, that are exhibiting any kind of COVID nineteen symptoms, not to enter the facility. Our staff will be required to wear PPE. Our patrons will be required to wear face masks in the building when they're not in the water. Our staff will be sanitizing the entire facility at a minimum of once per hour. Cleaning log, cleaning logs, sounds like we have logs in our water. We don't. We're actually gonna be tracking the times that we are cleaning the facility in a log format. Our entrances, our early entrance, or actually, you'll be, our customers will be able to enter the facility on the north side, our main entrance, and when they leave, they will use our south entrance. So, we'll have one way in the facility, one way out, and that's how we keep that facility secured while people are using it. Early entrance into the facility will not be allowed. Our patrons will need to maintain a six-foot social distancing while they check into the facility and also while they're waiting outside for their designated time. Registrations and reservations will be accepted through our online registration software, Civic Rec, or over the phone. So, this will create contactless payment procedures. And these reservations can be made up to seven days in advance of the day that they they'd like to come and use the facility. We will, we do not plan to open our lockers and showers at this time. We would ask our customers to come in ready to swim and leave directly from the pool. Lap swimming will be permitted. We'll have one person per lap lane unless they are household family members, and then we will, could allow up to two per lane. The maximum of ten people are permitted in the lap and leisure pool area at a time. That has recently changed. They brought out a new guideline this afternoon that allows us to have twenty-five percent capacity or up to fifty people, which is ever, whichever is fewer per room. So, we would be evaluating that as we go through the plan again. We just didn't have time to update this for you tonight. Our patrons will be reserving one-hour time slots. However, their workouts will be for forty-five minutes. They'll have five minutes to leave the facility, which will allow us ten minutes to go through and clean door handles and railings and such, and then also allow the next reservations to come in. Any swim aids that we'll be using, or swim aids are not gonna be allowed, such as kickboards, paddles and pole buoys. Equipment that's used for our water fitness will be sanitized after every use. To eliminate any kind of social interaction, we will not be using any of our lobby furniture, our bleachers, or any deck furniture. And also, finally, our lifeguard tubes will not be shared and they will be sanitized before and after each shift. Our opening date, what we're hoping to look at, we call it phase one, and what I really want to say, it's week one. And we're hoping for a June fifteen open. We would open with in the morning, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from five-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM, Tuesday, Thursdays, from five-thirty to nine-thirty, and then Saturdays from eight to eleven. We, at that time, would have one manager on duty and one lifeguard. For our water fitness, we would have on Monday and Wednesday from ten-thirty till eleven fifteen, and then Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have a couple time slots, nine-thirty to ten-fifteen and ten-thirty to eleven fifteen. And in this time slot, you will see that we have one manager and one maintenance. Our aquatics manager is also a water fitness instructor. So, during our water fitness class, we are allowed to have our manager, our lifeguard, and our water fitness person perform all of those duties at one time. And then on Fridays and Saturdays, we will be opening up for open swim. Those times would be from eleven AM to four. We will have one manager on duty, one lifeguard, and one maintenance person. As you can see, we're operating very, very thin with this, and we're allowed to do that because the facility is closed and we're allowing one way in and one way out. As we move on to what sits in here is phase two, which I would like to guess would be our week two, would be exactly the same as phase one. However, we would be adding a program, which is our Family Woodland Swim Academy. At that time, we would need to add three instructors, up to three instructors. It would depend on how many of the classes filled up and how many instructors were needed. Those classes will be Monday through Thursday from twelve fifteen to three o'clock. And then we're also going to open up our lap pool to the peak swim team, Monday through Friday from twelve to three, and that will require an additional lifeguard. Moving forward from that, because there's so many changes, I mean, not even just on a daily, on an hourly basis with this, we would just see what's coming down the pipe from the CDPHE and see what else we would be able to incorporate into our offerings at the facility. So, week one, or phase one, our projected revenues is about twenty-four hundred dollars. Our projected expenses are about fifty-one hundred dollars. This is based on that ten, the max ten per person capacity. So, this could change, but that's a recovery of forty-seven percent. When we look into phase two or week two, when we can actually start adding a few more programs, you're gonna look at our peak swim team added to our revenues and our swim academy bringing our revenues up to forty-three eighty-three. You'll see that our staffing comes up just a little bit with that. So, our total expenses is sixty-two thirteen with a recovery rate of seventy percent. With, that breaks down to actually general fund support of about two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars a day. And I bring that to your attention because as I spoke when we opened, is that personal recreation just opened and all the parks and playgrounds and such opened as well? So, the two-sixty-one is probably very close to what we spend on a day maintaining our parks, trails in open space, which are offered at no cost to our community. In two thousand nineteen, our recovery rate was approximately fifty percent. In twenty-twenty, our recovery rate was proposed to be sixty-five percent. So, with our reopening plan that we're providing you today, we are meeting or exceeding the twenty-twenty budget recovery percentage. Finally, if we weren't allowed to open, and I don't know what that timeframe's like, looks like, but our customers are gonna wanna refund of their passes, their punch cards, and any account credits that were issued when we had to cancel programs when we were shut down. That value comes to about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars that we would need to return to our customers. That's the end of my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I believe there may be some people that are here to speak, speak with you as well.
Council, questions for the director?
I'll start. Cindy, I've looked at the pool. So, you have two halves of the pool. Is it possible to open up one half and not the other?
And that is the intention when we're programming right now. We're programming one body of water, shutting that down, and then opening up the other body of water. So, yes, you could just open the lap pool, but then you don't have any open swim or water fitness classes. You just have lap swimming.
Is it possible to get numbers from your staff if we opened one of the sides of the pool?
Help me understand your question.
Well, you have two sides of the pool. All of these numbers are for opening both sides, correct? Both up?
That's correct.
Can we fill up one part of the pool and not the other? And what do those numbers look like?
So, I'm gonna dig in my memory bank as I was putting these plans together. If I remember correctly, and Ryan, you can help me out with this too. If we opened the lap pool for lap swimming only, we have a maximum capacity of ten people to use that facility with our social distancing. So, we have ten people every hour. It would depend on the number of hours that we would want it to be open, but yes, we could come up with those numbers fairly easy, but I am guessing it was, for the lap pool, and thinking it was sixty participants a week.
Okay, I guess for my question right now, it is possible to have a, an option of opening either side, but not?
Independently.
Independently?
Yes.
Okay. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? I have a question. Our, our budget showed that we were gonna lose three hundred and thirty thousand dollars this next year with our budget. That's what the pool costs us. Obviously, we like to spend money on recreation and things, but how is this affected by closing when we've done it? Overall, how's this budget gonna be affected? In, in which direction on that three hundred and thirty thousand?
Well, in our current plan, in week two or phase two, when we're adding some more programming, and as we can additionally add more programming and still limit our staff, our recovery rate's gonna be actually better than what was budgeted in our twenty-twenty budget.
Yeah, I mean, if I look at the phase two numbers, these are monthly numbers, right?
I'm sorry?
Weekly, weekly.
Yes, that's correct.
You know, we were, we were minus about thirty grand a month going into this. This, with this phase two looks like, obviously, we'll have less occupancy potential, but we also have less loss potential at this point.
Correct. If you look at it, and Cindy and I both discussed this today, in general, am I still correct, that's about two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars a day? Is that what it was?
And it's about two-sixty-one?
Okay, it's two-sixty-one a day is what essentially that is. It's very similar to what we, what we spend on our open space to maintain our open space in Woodland Park. Like, for instance, I think we're spending about two-hundred-and-forty dollars a day for Memorial Park to be open. And that's how much it costs for us to maintain that on a daily basis as well. If you, in comparison from like phase two to phase two of the Woodland Aquatic Center and Memorial Park, if you're just trying to do a cross comparison.
So, so there's a lot of misinformation in, in the community about this pool. It's not free. It's very much not free, and it's not, it's running in the red. So, people need to understand that, that we can't charge enough on our passes and daily rates to be in the black, in other words, positive. And so, we, we make an investment in recreation. It's, it's one of the things we do. We've, we've been talking in council about how much is too much. It's not infinity. So, in the community, remember that, you know, your, 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 your hit is a little between three and four bucks a day per, or, per week, per person. So, it is an expense that, that we on the council have to look at and, and justify, and it, it, we're not being meanies up here, but we, we do have to look at all our budget considerations, and we're always looking at efficiencies. My wife and I swim as often as we can. Apparently, we're gonna have to figure out when that is. We like to do it in the afternoon. That's not gonna happen anymore. But it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful attribute for the community, but it is costly, and it it costs us more than was anticipated when we voted for it on, on our ballot issue. Any other, Robert?
Yeah.
House members of the law.
Thank you. I too enjoy the pool. The numbers concern me, given COVID and the impact to the city. It's already, it cost us last year three hundred and thirty-two thousand in the, in the red, so we had to write a check to the pool for that, notwithstanding the programs and the income generation. So we had to write a check to the pool for that, notwithstanding the programs and the income generation that you're showing here. When I cost it out, you're $2.51 and I did that by 365 days, that comes to $91,615. But it's costing us 332,000. So my concern is, is it possible to do some projections on these numbers as we look at the overall budget to see the number of days, if it's not open every day? If it's open on specific days, for example, the whole day, so you have staff who aren't coming in and doing a little bit of time and going away a little bit of time. So is there a way of looking at this that gives us a graph of your revenues realistically? Because I'm concerned, quite frankly, the governor could shut us down again in the fall.
Real quick, I think there's some misunderstanding on the numbers. You said $261 a day to make above in terms of revenues versus expenses, right?
That would be the support that we'd be looking for.
Okay, so that times 180, basically, let's say 180 days, that comes to about $46,000, right? Is that, am I doing the math right there? For?
Yeah, I did it by three sixty-five, so that's
Well, that's for the whole year, but we're talking, we have another half a year open. If we kept it open under phase two, it would be about $46,000 to, from now until the end of the year.
Yeah, he's talking annual costs. I'm talking, I'm talking annual costs. And the other, the other part of it that's a concern as we look at the budget is, when the pool was brought in, I understood that it would, we expected exposure to the, to the community of about $90,000. That would be how much we would have to come out of pocket as a community for the pool. And it turns out to be 332,000. That is, that makes it really tough. That makes it tough on the community to continue to pour out that amount of money into it. So I'm hoping that you could, as we're kind of figuring out the numbers on this, look at people who are stakeholders, who, who want the pool, who want activities there. See what other income generations can occur that make it like, that take these numbers and bring them back to where we've agreed as a community, it's viable.
Well, you know, we've had this discussion, Cindy, that the report you're referring to was not a report that the city staff produced. It was produced by an independent organization. And I will just say that we knew at the time that that, at least the city did know at the time that that would not be accurate. And to, to a great degree. And the, I believe the, the YMCA and the discussion with the YMCA as well didn't necessarily have, weren't in agreement with the numbers that were proposed. They were very optimistic, I would say. And so, but what we're, what we're looking at is about a seventy percent cost recovery, which is pretty, it's a, it's a, it's pretty good. And that's a pretty good cost recovery for any pool in the nation. So.
Yeah, I just would like to comment to the programming that you were mentioning. So we were just amping up for our summer and after school programming. We were reaching out to the community. We're going to places that we hadn't been before in the last two years, bringing new people into the facility, and then we were shut down. And so we still have those plans in our back pocket as soon as we can allow more people into the facility, which already today they up those numbers for us. So we are thinking outside that box and we are reaching out to our community, trying to find out what are we missing that you guys are looking for that we can provide.
So that means maybe you can do the movie thing, right?
Oh.
Get fifty people and there you could do the movie thing, right?
Oh my goodness. It was a huge hit. So yeah, we had all kinds of dates scheduled and all kinds of things planned. And, you know, the wrench was thrown in not just for us, but for a lot of people in our community. But they're still there and we're ready to go once we can.
Thank you. House member Case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that the, the projections that were produced when the pool was being considered and the debt was being proposed were grossly understated. And unfortunately so, because it affected the planning. And so now we have the pool and since it opened, we have yearly seen significant improvement in that deficit and the subsidy that the general fund has to provide to operate the pool. And, and it gets better every year. And we have been opening up outside the box and being very creative. There's not a bigger critic of the pool than me. But it's ours. We have it. And we are working in that direction. I assure you, we've come a long way. Mr. Carr's been sitting here and helping with that. And, and I would be happy to provide the history of the ratcheting down of that subsidy. And I know that this, the previous council was committed to working in that direction each and every year in coordination with the staff. So know that we are aware of that and we have been working on that. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
House member, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Labar.
So I just, all of these restrictions, all of these rules are put upon you by the state?
Correct.
Okay. And so I'm wondering, since our county has received a waiver for certain activities and the casinos are now trying to find a way around all of the regulations. Sorry. I'm wondering if there's something that the city can look at in considering writing or the county can consider writing some type of waiver from such staunch restrictions, especially because the pool is chlorinated. So, you know, to have to wipe down surfaces as often as possible with antibacterial wipes or what have you. And the social distancing, I understand it. I understand why people want to do it. I understand people are nervous and afraid. And I strongly believe though, that if you choose to wear a mask or you choose to social distance, so be it. But I have a feeling that there are families that want to get in that pool. They want their kids in there for the summer and they want them to have a good time. I know the state has put a regulation on us that if we get more than fifteen cases in a week, we're in trouble and we have to go back to being on lockdown and so on and so forth. But I'm just wondering if there may be a possibility that we could work in conjunction with the county to see if maybe the commissioners could support us and ask them for a waiver of some type of these rules because our cases are so low. And I know that the pool in the summer has been so vital and important to families with their kids, especially, this may not sound the best, but especially because kids of a certain age can be left there and watched by the lifeguards and staff. So family can go ahead and run errands and do the things that they want to do and kids get to meet up there and have a good time. And it's, it matters. It matters to our community. And I, I think I've, I have never heard more input and worry from our community than I have about the pool, about it being open and reopening. I know a lot of people are concerned and think council just want to close it down. I ran because I felt that the pool was mismanaged when it was developed. I didn't like what had happened monetarily, so I really paid attention to that. But I also really pay attention to the citizens and their opinion, their concern and what they value in this community. And I have learned that the thing that I was most against is one of the things that is most valued by this community. So I want people to understand now, this evening, I have no intent of closing the pool, ever, unless there's some disastrous reason that I would have to do that. Because I know the value it brings and the people voted for it. They want it here and they use it. And pools never make money. They never make money. So it was a ridiculous thought to think that we're going to have a pool that's somehow going to generate a ton of revenue for us. That just doesn't happen. So if there are ways that we can figure out to get more activity, make more money on it, great. Previous council put aside money to go towards the debt for it because we know we need to get it paid off. We know we have to handle it and I intend to do that. But at the same time, I'm not closing this pool. I know the value it has to the community. And I've heard the concerns and I've never, ever received more email in my life, sitting up here on council, than I have about the concern that the pool will be closed. So I just want to clarify that that is my stance. I'm sure that there are other council people up here that support that stance. Some may not, but I do.
Given some direction and I'm going to let you take a seat if you wouldn't mind, I think.
I don't mind at all. Thank you very much.
And I, I, I'm going to welcome the public to the public comment section of this. We have fifty-some letters here. People are up in arms, I guess, on social media about us closing the pool. The pool is closed. We didn't do anything different. We haven't done anything different. And so we're, we're very interested in getting all these, but we're kind of confused because the pool is closed. We're looking at opening it. So with that in mind, I have one, two, three, four, five. I've got seven people here who indicated an interest in talking on this subject. And I'm going to, I'm going to use my predecessors' words that say, "If you have anything new to add, please come up. If you don't, if you're going to just say the same thing, I appreciate your impact." And you can raise your hand or say, "Yes, me too." But please have something new to contribute and I would appreciate if we, if we all keep that in mind. And we're all trying to be positive up here. We're, it's, this is a positive team with the staff and the city council and the community. And we've, we've, we've registered some things for you to consider that maybe you didn't know before. But I'm going to welcome you up to give us, you, you tell us, we're, we're hired by you folks. The seven, that's six of us right now, seven coming, but six of us are hired by you. So we're, we're going to listen to you because we're, you're our, we're your employees. I'm going to welcome, first of all, Gwen Doty Peckron. Thank you. If you could give your name and municipality, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Gwen Doty Peckron. I live at 211 Blue Sky Avenue in Woodland Park. Esteemed mayor and council members, my name is Gwen Doty Peckron. I am here as an avid supporter and user, user of our beloved aquatic center, as you probably imagined, and as the founder and executive director of Teller County's Peak Swim Team. We are not merely a swim team or just a business. So we are a business and you're talking about businesses. We are one. Many of our swimmers from first grade through high school will say we are an extended family. This is testament not only to our kids, but also to the community and the sport of our pool. Woodland Aquatic Center has been an amazing, has been amazing for our community of all ages and backgrounds. Children across Woodland Park and Teller County have taken swim lessons. And all third graders of Woodland Park School District have the opportunity to participate in a water safety course. This is invaluable. I also know master swimmers who swim nearly daily, retired friends who engage in water aerobics classes and recreational swimmers who are all eagerly awaiting the reopening of our pool, as you can see with that ample sample size of letters you've gotten. Please remember that this pool is still fairly new to our community. And in a mountain community that has not had access to a pool, it takes programs like these to grow swimmers in a swim-minded community. We are developing and growing this new skill and promoting the number of swimmers, young and old, in our area. It is a resource and it is a valuable city investment. Our voters have agreed by approving the pool with nearly seventy percent. And I realize the numbers of how much it would cost per year may differ, but I can tell you the folks that I know and by a sample that you have there, there is still want and support of this pool. The many donors on the donor wall support the pool and all of its benefits through hundreds of thousands of dollars in donations. Our team also loves our aquatic center and the many positive results it provides to numerous people. Many of these folks are excited to return to the pool, not only for the unbelievable physical benefits, but also because the tremendous mental benefits that water therapy can bring. Aquatic activity is incredibly important, not only for lap and competitive swimmers, but also for seniors, rehab patients, pregnant women and others who may not be able to engage in land activities that are high impact. More and more community members will realize these benefits as the center reopens and programs continue to support the growth of a swim-minded community. As for our team, a couple of weeks ago, I emailed each of you a list of accomplishments our swimmers have achieved in just five years of existence. It is truly incredible how this team and the sport of swimming have helped in academics, in confidence and in self-discipline. These are things that a budget does not account for. In that packet, I also included an A to Z list of benefits that swimming brings to people of all ages and abilities. Because of the neutralizing impacts that chlorine, bromine, UV light and heat with humidity have on viruses, including COVID-19, coupled with extremely low numbers of local positive COVID cases in Teller County, the fact that our swimmers are responsible and aware of health concerns, the fact that USA Swimming has worked with CDC to establish guidelines for multiple swimmers per lane and the county's preparation and flattening of a curve, we ask that you open the pool as soon as possible. The governor just submitted guidance for indoor pools, including a pool limit of fifty people or twenty-five percent of capacity, whichever is lower. It also mentioned this limit of fifty people or twenty-five percent to be per room in indoor facilities. Add to this the fact that the guidance also permits recreational swim, while encouraging those interactions to be limited to people of same household. Many people from competitive and lap swimmers to water aerobics, to recreators will be able to dive in and immediately support and use both the lap and the leisure pool. Having been approved by the state and considering that several jobs, our team's business and the health and wellness of many Woodland Park and Teller County citizens depends on the pool reopening, we ask each of your support in reopening the pool right away. Continuing to represent the voice of your constituents who overwhelmingly voted the pool into existence just a few short years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, and once again, I would ask people to bring something new, Lori Naples. Your name and municipality, please.
Good evening, everyone. It's Lori Naples and I live at 319 April Suncourt in Woodland Park. And I'm coming from the outlook of someone that uses the pool. And while we're talking about all the wonderful recreational, I use it because it is my physical therapy. And when I started at the pool, I just, I was using a cane. I could hardly walk. And now thanks to Ryan and Suzie, our great teacher, I mean, I'm up and moving again. And I'm just wondering how many people that go to that pool every day, just to make them be able to move again. So I'm looking at it from a need, not a want. And the other direction I look at it from is from an educator. I've been a teacher at Woodland Park School District for, we moved here almost 20 years ago. And I teach special education students and I teach some of the kids that have a rough time and tend to get in a lot of trouble if they have free time. And that I've seen so many of my students at that pool. And I know for every minute that they are there, they are not somewhere else with free time. And we all know what happens with kids that don't make good decisions in free time. So I see the younger kids there at our elementary school. And when we moved here, I was concerned about my younger kids. They didn't have a place to learn how to swim. And we did back in Chicago. So when the pool was built, it was just, all these kids, they're getting the life-saving skill that we, I believe it's third or, or third or fourth graders, I think it's third graders, that all now, we, I mean, how is that going to impact them in the future, having that pool there? We have no idea how that's going to help them. So just for all these reasons, I just and, sorry, one more point, that I've been in this, this school, this city for almost 20 years. And when we came here, the middle school was busting out. We had to put an addition on it. And every year I've seen our enrollment go down. And it, it breaks my heart because we live in this absolutely beautiful paradise. And people aren't moving here with families now. Anybody that's a realtor in town will tell you that we're getting older people moving in. We're becoming a retirement community. And one of the things that people come in when they, when they look at our town and say, "What do you have for my kids?" It's going to be one of the first questions they ask. They're going to look at the school district and they're going to say, "What do you have?" And wouldn't you want that for your family and your kids? It's a big selling point and we've got to figure out a way to get families back into this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen? Heather Kenyon is next. Name and municipality, please.
I'm Heather Kenyon. I live at 911 Teller Lane here in Woodland Park. My name is Heather Kenyon and I am a Woodland Park community member, a mother and a grandmother. I have lived in Woodland Park for 20 years. During this time, I have been a supporter of our community getting an aquatic center. I have watched and I I have watched and I have listened as our leaders have taken special consideration to keep Teller County healthy and strong. I appreciate the efforts of our local officials have taken. I now ask special consideration to be given towards the reopening of our local community pool. The Aquatic Center provides many opportunities for my family. Before the opening of the Aquatic Center, I had to find other communities to provide water safety activities for my son. Water safety is very important for my family. So it was important that my very young son took swim lessons. Unfortunately, at the time, we had to commute to Divide or Manitou Springs. Now I have a grandson and water safety is still important. I was excited that the Woodland Aquatic Center was going to offer him many water safety opportunities throughout his years. As a voting community member, I voted for the Aquatic Center to have local options for swim and waterfront. The Woodland Aquatic Center now provides opportunities for our family since my son is on the swim team, Peak Swimming. He has never been a competitive sports player and honestly struggled socially in social settings. The swim team provides him an opportunity to focus on himself as an athlete and grow individually and set healthy goals. The swim, swim team also provides him a comfortable environment to develop, to develop friendships. As a swim team member for almost two years, I have seen my son grow more confident, learn to receive feedback from a trusted coach, physically and emotionally grow stronger, and learn skills, skills to work as a team member. He misses the commodity the swim team offers. For the past year, the Aquatic Center has provided my son a place of employment. The Woodland Aquatic Center provides employment opportunities to our community members, and most importantly to me, for our youth. My son is eager to go back to work. He is fearful that his time out of water and lack of in-service training and application is going to set him back in his skills. Safety is important to him. Lifeguarding gives him a sense of purpose and pride. He is ready to get back to serving our community as a lifeguard. As you can see, the Woodland Aquatic Center has very valuable, important purposes to our family. The reopening of the Aquatic Center provides a sense of normalcy for our community. For my son and many others, it provides more than just normalcy. It provides mental and physical health, friendship, responsibility, motivation, and purpose. I ask that you please consider reopening the Aquatic Center for our community, our children, and our families. Our community wants and needs the Woodland Aquatic Center to reopen. Safety is number one. I know the management team at the pool and I trust their judgment and their implementation of the CDC safety guidelines. I know and trust the swim coach and the children who follow his guidance and have full confidence they will also follow safety procedures set forth. I also live in our wonderful community. We are strong and we are healthy. I have no doubt Teller County wants to remain healthy and strong and will also follow safety practices put in place so that our community can once again enjoy the Aquatic Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Kinsley Peckron. Name and you, tell us where, what town you live in.
My name is Kinsley Peckron and I live at two eleven Blue Sky Avenue, Woodland Park, eight oh eight six three. Dear City Council, hello. I am on the Peak Swim Team and I believe you should open the pool. Here are some reasons why. The pool is where I met some of my best friends. The pool is a good place to make friends. Um, swimming is very healthy. It works out your muscles and is great for your mental health. Last, the pool's a great place to get jobs. For example, the lifeguards. Uh, lifeguards can learn life-changing stuff. For example, CPR and first aid. A lot of the lifeguards are high schoolers. Working at the pool will look good on their resumes, college resumes. I love the pool, which is why I'm asking you to open the Aquatic Center. Love myself.
Thank you very much. Next we have Nolan Turner, or I think, does that sound right? Name and tell us what town you live in, please.
Nolan Turner, um, three, 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 zero, Regent Drive. My name is Nolan and I'm twelve. I'm a part of Woodland Park's Peak Swim Team and reopening the pool would be amazing. I love my team so much and we need practice in order to stay a team. Thank you.
Thank you, son. Appreciate it. Uh, next up, we have Kayden Wog. I'm sorry, I, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Hague. Oh, uh, that's an A. I, I saw you there, so I, thank you. Name and, uh, what town you live in, please.
My name is Kayden Hague and I live in Woodland Park, Edlow Road, twenty-one thirty-seven. Um, dear City Council Members, I swim for Peak Swimming Team and I would like you to know how much I value the work you put in in the Aquatic Center. The pool has given me so many awesome opportunities, first and foremost being swimming. Competitive swimming has been an awesome experience. I really enjoy it because I've gotten to just gotten to go to so many different places to compete. Also, I've met many friends through swimming at the pool and through competition. I practice during meets, I've made lots of great friends and grown closer to them thanks to the pool. Now go over to their houses and get to hang out and have a great time. Also, I've grung myself through to them during workouts. Exercising with the team during practice has helped me become fit and better at swimming. Also, I've learned that swimming is good for my asthma. Swimming has proven to strengthen my lungs. Finally, all these awesome things come from the pool. That is why I can't wait until the pool is reopened and the variance is accepted. Then we can all go back to the pool and enjoy swimming. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I would mention we've got a spacing situation that we're under here. If, if the people in the back room could space out, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you. Um, last up, Logan Hague. Please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Logan Hague, also at twenty-one thirty-seven Edlow in Woodland Park. I'm actually reading a letter on behalf of a parent who was unable to make it tonight. Uh, Samantha Crouper. My name is Samantha Crouper. I'm a parent of three Woodland Park School District students. I'm writing in hopes to share with you how valuable the pool is to my family. This value started long before I lived in Colorado. I grew up on a swim team and without that team, I'd have never learned what true dedication and determination was. Would have missed the opportunity to form longstanding relationships with peers and their families, which still exist to this day. And I would have never gotten into the United States Military Academy. As a West Point graduate of the class of two thousand and four, I firmly believe that a big reason I not only attended, but graduated and served was because of the sport of swimming. It made me who I am today. Because of swimming, I was able to receive a phenomenal education, serve my country, and have opportunities that my parents did not. Now I have a successful career, serve on several boards and committees in our community, and have the means to volunteer and give back in a positive way. I want my children to be able to have those same opportunities. All three of my children have fallen in love with this community and a huge part of that has to do with the bonds that they've created through the swim team. My oldest son now driven in his academics and thriving confidence and connections because of how successful he is as a swimmer. He tells me every day that he will push to do well in school so that he can qualify for a swimming scholarship. The sport has transformed him and taking that away would not only do huge injustice to him, but all the kids just like him that rely on this outlet to help them become the best versions of themselves. Please for them and for families like mine, consider keeping the pool open. I realize that the financial burden can be great, but I know through my engagement with other similar communities that creative thought and new ideas can do a lot to preserve a city establishment like an aquatic center. It's not just about having a resource, it's about having a resource that helps our youth develop and flourish. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hague, I have a request. Uh, I'm Rusty Neal. Can you forward that email to me?
You bet.
Thank you. And you can find my email, it's the R Neal. Thank you.
Um, that's the end of the signup list. Is there anybody else who, uh, wanted to speak on the subject? Anybody on, uh, chat or anything? If they have, if, I don't know if anybody's raised their hand on Zoom. Okay. So I will close the public comment at this point. Uh, I think you've got some, uh, direction or you, you don't have some direction. Um, various people have spoken with, uh, attention to some direction. I'll start with, uh,
Real quick, if, if we can, Mayor Carr, is just, if, if they're just, I guess the, and I'll defer to the attorney, but it seems that I need a vote. I guess it's to, if you, if you want to keep the pool closed and then direction on what additional information, uh, you would need to make a decision in the future, possibly the eighteenth of June, we could present that information to you if that were the case. Is that, is that?
I think, I think that was your read on, on things. Uh, I would, I would hope that on the eighteenth, we'd have full information and be able to proceed, but it's open.
Is that still, I mean, I mean, I, I, I haven't heard a vote, so it's kind of my, I was just wondering if they're,
Mr. Mayor.
The same way.
I don't want it to seem like because we don't have enough information, we're saying no to it. And the way that's coming across sounds that way. If we can find a way to open it, that's our goal. So if, if the public came expecting there to be a vote to open this today, I think that we need to clarify that.
Yeah, maybe you just can clarify. I guess I'll clarify. If you don't vote, it remains open. It, and I, and I, because I, I've got budget direction from City Council to open the budget, open the, open the pool. So you would need to vote in the negative to, to change the direction of that.
I, I think we, we have, we have need of some more information, uh, regardless. Um, so I would, I would, uh, that's appeal that we would, that we would, you, uh, I'm sorry, I'm the mayor. I'm presiding here.
I, I,
We, we, we have asked for some information and you've, you've got a phased in, in, uh, stance here. The pool is closed, it's not open right now. And so, um, we are interested in opening it, certainly with it, this schedule's fine. But I heard cer- certain council members asking for more information. I think we're, we should be able to get that information.
Mayor, I don't have, I don't have clear guidance, cause you'd have,
I, I, I thought I was pretty clear.
But I, I know I need a vote from a consensus of City Council to,
We need a vote to continue to have it remain closed because it is currently budgeted to be open and operating openly. Despite the COVID nineteen situation, we already carry the ability to have the pool be open, even though it's in a limited way. So I think what, what the city manager is trying to say, and I think maybe this is what you're trying to say, is we do need to make a motion to vote to have it remain closed. If we don't do that, it can continue open, to open in a limited manner because we've already accounted for that in the budget previously.
Yeah, my, my point is we're just looking for more information. We're not trying to, uh,
I can say that I'm okay. I've had my hand up for quite a while. Um, I just wanna say that I am fine with moving forward with the pool opening and I'm in total agreement with Mizalbar, uh, Mizalbar, um, that I would like to ask the county to, um, uh, include us in a waiver, uh, request that our recreational facilities open fully. And so I am completely in favor in, in opening the pool in as quick a schedule as we can.
Yeah, I'm confused by the obvious situation that's full of chlorine and give me a break. But, um, House Member Pat.
Yeah, um, my question to the city manager is, we're using terms, uh, we have, it is in the budget to open it, but are the dates here, um, were they prescribed by previous council action? Or are they discretionary on your part? The dates that are for the two phases of opening here, are, were they prescribed by the council? Or are they discretionary on your part? Since you have, um, you know, bu- budget authority over this.
This, I would say discretionary on my part.
Okay. Yes. So, so therefore, if we waited until the eighteenth council meeting, you could also in a discretionary manner let us see better information and then change your timeline. Is that correct?
I could, I just, I, I, I don't disagree that that's not a bad idea. I just would like to have a vote so I know for sure that the majority of City Council doesn't want to,
According to the charter, it's your discretion. Is that correct? Or is it necessary according to the charter for us to make a vote? Are you asking for a vote because you prefer for us to make that decision? Or are you able to, in a discretionary manner, make the decision yourself?
Let me just say something. The confusion is that we can open it. The state is now allowing us. It's not him, it's not us. If, if the virus never happened, the pool would never have been closed. So now the state has come forward and said, hey, here's how you can open. Great.
So we're doing this because the state told us to?
The state is allowing us to.
It is allowing us, correct. So therefore, my question remains, are you able in a discretionary manner to wait for council action when we can get more information so that we can feel comfortable making a vote?
I'm not, I honestly, I'm not, I think the best answer is for council to, if I could recommend that, just to vote if you want to remain, keep it closed. I've already done the analysis, the, the, the program manager that, that, um, you trust the program, the, the, the pool has made a recommendation that addresses economies of scale and does the most optimal model we possibly can with personnel and what I feel is a realistic, um, revenue, uh, number to reopen. I wouldn't be making, I wouldn't be, we wouldn't have presented this tonight if I didn't feel comfortable with those numbers and being able to accomplish that, um, within our budget. So, and we, as you all know, I, I hear the community speaking to me about keep, keeping the pool open. I, I would like to have the pool open as the community has expressed to me. Um, but this was moved from a simple, um, report to City Council to a, a, a business item for, for, um, discussion. And if you want to keep the pool closed for more information, just make the vote and I'll do that.
Well, two points. I don't know that you can come to an economies of scale analysis without more detailed, uh, budget information, which you have in your hand and did not present tonight. One, two, I think you're being provocative, seeking a vote of council when you have the discretion to do this all on your own.
I was just gonna leave it as a report and I was gonna open it up. So that, that was my choice. I didn't move it to, it wasn't me that moved it to the business item. It was a request of council.
Okay, so since, since you have the discretion to operate as you like, as you, as you discern, according to the charter, you can either discern, uh, that we go ahead and open it or as has been requested by some council members, you could give us more information if you'd like us to make a vote, which we'd be willing to do. The reality is, this is not about the Parks Director. She does a fantastic job encouraging the community, running this organization, letting it be a place that people love to go to. And we did put it in for discussion because, uh, apparently and obviously, based upon the, uh, what we have in our minutes today, to give the public a chance to speak and they have. And I think that they've made their case very well. And we, and certainly from the basis of their enjoyment of the facility and their ability to use it, that's fantastic. But I see no necessity for us to make a vote tonight. You have discretion to open it. If you're deciding to, under your discretion to open it, then you are under the city charter able to do so. But I, I see no need for us to have to make a vote tonight without the kind of information that can help us put it in perspective to all the other matters of the budget that we have to consider moving forward.
So, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject here. Um, I, I agree, you have the discretionary power. We just want some more information to follow on, maybe next meeting. Um, uh, that's been, that's been asked. We, this is the first, people, this is the first time we've seen this today. This was available before this meeting. We did not get it till this meeting. So we haven't seen this, we haven't had a chance to absorb it. Uh, we're absorbing it now. It's a great PowerPoint and all that kind of things. But I want the community to understand, this is the first time we've seen it as a council. We have not seen it. Staff has seen it. They've made their evaluations over months or weeks or however long. We, we, we're asked to evaluate something on a spontaneous, uh, moment, which we do a lot up here. But, but that's why there's, that's why there's all this discussion is because we have, uh, new information in front of us. We have some other interests that, that we're speaking of. I would suggest that we proceed and, uh, and if this, if the city can provide some of this, uh, information in a subsequent meeting, that, uh, we, we try to get that together. Uh, Council Member Neal.
My recommendation Darren, yeah, unless you hear a council member make a motion, my recommendation to you is execute your plan. You're not gonna hear this city council member criticize you if there's no motion for a vote.
Thank you.
It's in your budget.
Thank you, Councilmember. I guess, then I guess the only question is that I do, if there's no vote to keep it closed, is just to get what, please provide guidance on what additional information specifically you would want on the 18th. So we can provide that to you.
So Councilmember Neil had some, some, and Councilmember Pat had some.
The only piece that I would like is to, to see if there's any kind of an insurance recouping, if we can phase that, keep that out of your decision on what to open up. Because that could be useful later on.
That, that was an excellent recommendation, something we'll look into. Suzanne works with SIRSA and we can have those, we can ask those questions.
Thank you.
Did we get the answer to the one side of the pool situation?
Yeah, the optimization, it, it probably makes no sense to open one because of the way the staff, I thought there would be some economies of scales or, or wouldn't have as much staff, so yes.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Director.
Oh, I just wanted to respond, if I may, Mayor Carr, in regards to just getting the information today. While we were planning to be on the agenda since last month for June 4th as a report, we came prepared until yesterday when we learned that we were going to be under new business. Our intent, if we would have known earlier, would be to have this information to you prior to this meeting so you could read it. And so we could provide the information that you're asking for us today. Because we can get it for you, we just don't have it here today.
So, so I, I respect everything you just said. We, we have a constant problem over a decade or so that I've been around council of this exact same thing. So this is not new. I was really explaining to the community what the situation, because they may think we, we know what we're doing up here on us, that we've had this sitting in front of us for a long time, we have not. And, and I hope the, the community understands that we're trying to do our due diligence, it's our job, it's what we're hired to do. But the, the staff has all kinds of time, they're paid to do this, they're paid to put these things together. But if we get them just before the meeting, we haven't had time to do our due diligence. So I wasn't complaining about, about what you did at all. It's just a common problem that we've had, we're, we're trying to correct it, it's, it's becoming better and better all the time. Somebody else had their hand. House Members, who I got.
My, my concern about this is that, in my understanding, the city manager has a limit on his discretionary decisions of $25,000. Right now, the pool is saving the city $30,000 to be closed. So that's why this is important, to get these numbers out and to analyze them and see where we're at with them. So it moves from being discretionary to a part of his job responsibility to bring it before council. And the manner in this, the way this was brought tonight is problematic.
That discretionary spending is on a per expenditure basis or per contract basis?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Case on that because the closing was a function of what the state did, not what the city did. So it might not quite fall into that. But you, you had mentioned about information that we needed, so I'd like to know what's in the fund if it were to remain closed, to be able to meet the $142,734 refund requirement. I would like to know the actual monthly cost to keep it closed presently. And I'd like to know the mix, an accurate, a more accurate description of the mix of actual payments per month compared to what other use from prepayments. I mean, I'd like to see a more full, what, how many people are going to be here in each phase? I think you've only given us numbers of new revenue. And I'd like to know the actual projections of, of other people that would come. And of course, that's going to be a mix of what's allowable under the guidelines as well. So that, that would affect revenue, obviously. So that's a mix that I don't know, and certainly you're obligated to allow prepaid people to come in. That would change the mix of what you can actually obtain in new revenue.
Great, one of our, if, if I may, one of our options for our prepaid were to either prepay or do your daily entry. That will be, I thought would be a good benefit for our customers to have that option. If they want to actually give us new revenue right now, or if they would like to use what they've already paid for. Giving that option and then keeping those options open so we can do sales. So if we only did prepaid, then we wouldn't be able to do any future sales. The Mayor Protem LaBarre, you're right, the limit of the numbers does limit what we can bring into the pool. It's changing all the time, our state association is very involved with the CDPHE and they're asking for our comments and our feedback and how, and letting them know how we can help keep our community safe and open all of our recreational facilities. But yes, we can look at doing a variance to our local that will end up going to the CDPHE as well. But we can look at all of those options. This plan actually started off as just a variance to our local public health because nothing was opening. And it's like, well, we want to try to at least get some of our people in here so they can treat their physical therapy and get their recreational activities, providing another recreational activity to our community. You know, one of the things that we see every day when we come into town is open our community. This is part of our community, let's try to get it open.
Oh, may I ask a question? Okay.
You just ask yourself.
Oh, that's me. So one of the things that I've been interested in is I go, I did go there for medical therapy. I, I go, I walk against the river, whatever it's called. And I've, I've been interested that if, if we possibly have a revenue source for medical reimbursement situations, you know, that, it seems obvious to me that there's a lot of people that look like me or of my age, let's call it. Thank goodness, there's not a lot of people look like me. But anyway, the, the, the situation seems to be that there, there's possi- and I, I'm just speculating here. But I, I, I know we have a Silver Sneakers situation that we're familiar with. I, I, I'm just wondering if there's some other revenue sources we could do, including maybe slightly raising fees and things like that. Do you have gift certificates, by the way?
We do.
Okay, so gift certificates are available, that's how a lot of restaurants are staying in business. But I'm just throwing that out on the table for your consideration. Because there's, there's a possibility for some revenue, I don't, you know, it's, it's not my business, I don't know.
But we're happy to take suggestions and ideas and look into them and see if it's something maybe we might be missing. The insurance thing gets to be a sticky business, Silver Sneakers, not a big revenue source for us, brings in a lot of people, not a lot of money. But it's an asset for these people to come and use at a price for free. And we get reimbursed very little for them, but we do have people coming in off of those programs. But in our first two phases, we will not be honoring the Silver Sneakers because we're not operating at 100%.
Mr. City Attorney, you've had your hand up for a while.
I just, perhaps, I apologize in advance if this is repetitive, if everybody's already on the same page. I did want to make sure it's clear, and if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to do what I can to alleviate that. But from a process standpoint, as far as the budget is concerned, it was appropriated, council made that approval, the budget was passed, that happened last fall. And so from the manager's perspective, he has authority now to implement the budget as it was passed. COVID-19 hits, and so there's certain decisions that have to be made, recommendations are otherwise, what do we close? What do we hold on to? How do we minimize expenditures while we look at what our revenues are? But at the end of the day, the administration of the budget, administration of it is the city manager. And the reason I think this discussion is important and why the city manager, without putting words in your mouth, is looking, if you're looking to amend the budget, that has to be something that a formal council action occurs. So to that degree, you have that authority as council to amend what the budget states. And so that's where a formal action, if you're looking to keep the pool closed for whatever time, that direction, rather than going through a, a formal ordinance process to remove revenues and expenses from the budget, et cetera. That's why I think a formal action might be appropriate, if that's the route you're looking to go. If council is confident that the manager can make those decisions, but you still want additional information, that's what I'm understanding is happening at this point, then no motion is necessary. If you're looking to look at, at this plan and saying this isn't appropriate for the community, based off of your discussion and your decisions, that's where a formal action would be appropriate. Because now you're looking at amending the budget in an informal way. I don't know if that helps clarify for everyone.
Thank you, sir.
If, if I can, Mayor.
I think that's where we're at, we're pretty much.
Just one last comment, I mean, I just want to remind council that I, I did send about, generally about $450,000 in budget freezes from general fund and the 410 fund. That's why I feel generally confident if we go with this, this, this phase two plan, that we can absorb those. I don't necessarily feel as comfortable until I see that third data point, whether we go to the, the full open model. And I would have to analyze the data before I, before I would work with this, with, with the Parks and Rec Department, before we go to that $165,000 question. So I do think we can absorb this $47,000 question.
Very wise perspective. I appreciate the 70% approaching 100% on the phase two, that's, that's starting to look better and better all the time. As much as you can improve that, I welcome that, I don't know if you have half lifeguards or, anyway, I'm just joking, but yeah.
If I may, Mayor Carr, it is the goal of every staff member at the Aquatic Center, all the way down to our lifeguards, our, our, our high school lifeguards, is to improve our recovery rate and not ask for as much support from our general fund. So it is in the climate of the facility by the services that we provide and continue to look outside that box and how we can do better.
That's a great culture.
Thank you.
And I, and I think you do a fantastic job of having motivated employees who care about the facility, far beyond. I mean, these are all budget considerations we have to take into account, not that you don't, aren't concerned with them. But you've got a staff that makes people happy to be there, excited about the facility, which is, you know, a pretty neat facility. And, and they feel it's part of the community, so that's to your credit, and I thank you for that.
I'll give that to our staff, thank you very much.
And does, do the, the young spokespeople understand what is taking place? In other words, they will probably be putting their swimsuits on on June 15th?
I thank you, I think we're done with that particular item. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor Carr, councilmembers, thank you very much for your time this evening, I do appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, we, we felt it was important enough to the community that we discuss all these things, and so I appreciate everybody's patience.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, thank you.
Six feet apart, anyway.
Personal responsibility.
We're going to move to council reports, or actually reports, and I'm, I'm up first. I've got a few things, we kind of truncated our work session retreat about 45 minutes to an hour or more, short of some questions we want to work on. The retreat, we're going to continue on with a facilitated council interaction situation and which will also go right into a budget discussion. You will see a doodle poll soon by Suzanne, the city clerk. And so council will be looking for that doodle poll. We're going to try to do it on the weekend so everybody can be there. I think it's important that the whole council be there. And so that, look for that doodle report. So just to review, it's a work session, extension of the retreat, and we're going to, we're going to work on various things. The next thing is I've asked for a functional priority plan from the city manager. And in anticipation, we have a new budget calendar, I didn't see it, did it get released to everybody in the mail? Okay, so we have a new budget calendar, a new, new workaround, we're going to, the council will be involved from the start. And I've asked the, the city manager with his department heads to come up with something called a functional priority plan. Basically, it's an education piece for all of us, including all of us who are new. And it will come before any of these sessions, this is, this is the calendar I'm talking about. The various people, we've talked about this offline, but you will see a new calendar come out. And you will see an item zero, which isn't on here, which is the functional priority plan that I've, I've asked the city manager to put together. And, and it'll, it'll be a great education piece for, for all of us. The third thing, we have a discussion with the COVID funds with Bob Campbell, that I'll be meeting with them with my hard hat on. And I, I reviewed the audio today, so I've, I've heard the whole conversation. I was blocked out of that meeting for some reason. But it's certainly, it was unintentional, just that I, I had to review and find, get the audio, so I was caught up with it. We've received the letter that the city manager has sent us, that the DOLA is holding these funds. We will be strenuously interested in getting direct access to them as a municipality. And me with my hard hat on and my hard-nosed negotiating style will hopefully do well with these friends I have up in the county. And we'll, we'll have other people assisting in that. So those are the three things I have, Mayor Protem LaBarre, you're up.
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
House Member Case.
Good evening, thank you. We talked a little while ago and about those funds, the $2.1 million that the county has been earmarked for. And this comes from DOLA, this isn't FEMA or anything like that. There's a potential, when I, I reviewed this and kind of put some pen to paper, there's a, a potential that we might have $500,000 that may not have a place. And, and not to say that that is going to happen, but the potential is, is quite positive that that may occur. That might be an opportunity, and this is, I'm just asking you guys to think about this and maybe just entertain the notion that maybe it might be an opportunity for us as a council to have those resources to maybe create a grant-type program to maybe help some of our businesses that have been struggling. So think about that, just initial thoughts, that it might be a really cool opportunity if that comes to fruition, that we might be able to find a way on a needs-based grant program to maybe insert some help or some resources. So that's, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you, I, I failed to mention, part of my request to the city manager was to come up with what, what are actuals? And, and, and some of the, some of that speculative potentials that we come up with. I mean, my, my position is we've got a third of the population, what's, let's see, one-third of 2.1? I, I got a pretty good idea what that is. And, and I, I would say that that might be an opening stance for me. But we, we, we do have actuals and we do have programs that would be of interest. All of us up here really in tune with the businesses here. And I think that's an excellent idea. And, and how we formulate that to fit in with the parameters that DOLA has given us will be the, will be the interesting gymnastics that these two gentlemen up here in this one table will help us with.
And just one more thing, and maybe we go even a step further. Because really, as, as this council, we're, we answer to our citizens first and foremost. And, and we have businesses that aren't necessarily citizens. So in fairness and to be equitable, maybe we look at not just businesses, but maybe even, there's a lot of people in our community that are suffering from job loss, from a number of different things. And just to be equitable, maybe we consider not just the businesses, but maybe our citizens as well in that, in that analysis. So just a thought and maybe an idea if things pan out, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I think innovation will be key there and a lot, a lot of good imagination. We'll, we'll get rid of our engineer hats and put on our artist hats. And, and, and ask our legal authority if this artistic interpretation passes muster. and, and, and ask our legal authority if this artistic interpretation passes muster. So I, I think you're right. We've got some avenues to explore. Thank you. Councilmember Pat.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
I've got two topics. First is the report as the Keep Woodland Park liaison. I'm going to make this one as brief as possible. Two points that I think need to come out that have not already been discussed when I was at the mic. There was an idea that was floated in the committee I just need you to be aware of. And that is that they discussed a possible website addition where people could take a pledge. It's been done in other places where it's a simple, people come online, take a pledge, I'm going to pick up trash. Something super simple. There's no oversight, but it just kind of gives a little bit of recognition. Plus, it opens up a little bit of a, a pathway to maybe reach back out and see if somebody might want to join the, the Keep Woodland Park beautiful committee. So I thought that was a great idea. And the second thing, we learned from the city liaison that sadly, four trees are going to be removed in Woodland Park. Two of them are out in front of grandma's. Two of them are at the intersection of Highway 67 and Lake Boulevard. But the cool thing is they're not going to be completely removed. They're going in for a grant, and they have a sculptor identified that they're going to get money. They're actually going to do a wood carving out of those two trees. So we get a kind of a neat little thing that I thought was worth mentioning to the citizens. We, we hope to see a neat little, two sculptures at Highway 67 and Lake Boulevard. Okay, that is the first topic. The second is a real simple thing. Val, you had asked for some work session ideas, and I'm actually going to introduce the first phase. Robert, I think is going to add to it. I'm, I may be wrong, but.
Somebody take notes, please.
Yeah, there, there were three work sessions that I want to just get on the table as something that I would like to see moving forward, and that's the municipal code issues, more than just the single family. I would like to see a work session where we could address some of the other inconsistencies in the municipal code, zoning specifically. The second thing is I would like to see a work session where we can actually get the recovery plan organization starting to work with us so we can start floating the ideas. There's a lot of informal ideas, requests, but I would ask that we set up a formal work session for that. And then having watched a couple incidences now on some boards or committees, I would like a third work session where we talk about having some sort of a training class for our chairpersons on the different subcommittees on procedures, proper procedures. We've had a couple goofs, so maybe a little training class, a simple training class setup, work session where they are told the same things that we went through on our rules and procedures so that we don't have some of the collisions. Those are my two topics. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, I'll let you weigh in. I'm, I'm sure you have a couple words first.
I would just, on that last point, just as an information piece, I don't remember the exact date, but about maybe eight months ago, we did that very, very thing. We had Sam Light from CERSA come out. We invited all of the board and commission member, all of the members, not just the chairpersons. And we had it here in this very room, and we, I think we had probably 15 or 20 of them for it. And perhaps another avenue or a route to, to be more specific and targeted is not to give myself more work to do, but perhaps I go to all these boards and as a brief part of the agenda, provide that information and training.
Great idea.
Plus, we have the consistency portion, which we're trying to get to with the bylaws that they're, they're working on. Councilmembers, Zuluaga.
Thank you. So I want to first thank Mary Jo Larson for her efforts last weekend with the Saddle Club to get the kids out. The kids did face painting, they did balloons, they rode horses. They really made an effort to allow the community to get out, out in fresh air. Wasn't a, there wasn't a social distancing issue. So I just kudos to Mary, Mary Jo for stepping up and having the courage to get our people out and get some hope back in the, in the community. So I know we didn't get all the pieces in place on that, but it was a commendable effort. And so I'd just like to encourage cooperation amongst the, the city staff and the business community. I think what she started last Saturday for the use of the, the Woodland Station could be a solution for our community to have on a weekly basis, Saturdays, Sundays, all types of outdoor events that would really assist us as a community to start to do something other than just have people drive through our town every year, every summer. And so anyway, some ideas of signage on how to get them to turn off something as simple as going up by McDonald's, going up Baldwin and coming down Fairview or something as a way of letting the drivers know, oh, yeah, there's an event happening and getting some sort of diversion there would be great. Anyway, so kudos to Mary Jo. And something that I learned this today is occurring, and I guess, Mayor, you've been part of it now for a while, is this economic revitalization team. There's a lot in the community that are saying, okay, what are we doing? What are we doing? So I would just like to say, anyone who's, who's got some energy that they want to weigh in on this, I would like us to really get, I like to get past organizations and structures because I've watched how that just seems to go sideways. But I'd just like to see collaboration amongst our business community and our, and our city staff and our council to really see what we can do to make this summer just like, just hit a home run. You know, there was a DDA, I remember, two, three meetings ago. A guy said, yeah, Woodland Park is, has cleaned out the COVID and we're open for business. You know, it's just a great little tagline. And if we can put that on, out on tourism and let the rest of the, of the state and the country know that there's someplace here that's more than just a pass-through, I think it could really help our business community. So the other thing that I wanted to talk about, we had on Main Street, we had a cleanup this week, last, what day was it? Friday, last Friday. And we had 27 volunteers and three staff and went down Main Street and cleaned sign, cleaned windows, swept sidewalks. And I'd just like to say, Woodland Park, if we could do that every week until our town sparkles, we could really improve our, not only the look of our town, but also our attitude, just that cooperation. So the guy here who's collecting trash, I don't know where we go to. They sign up with Woodland Park, that, that website you're talking about, or just email us. It's like, hey, I'll take an afternoon and go with somebody to clean up trash if you want, you know? And so anyway, I'm just saying, let's pull together. It'd be great if we can build on this because the next cleanup isn't scheduled for like till August or something, isn't it with you guys? August 6th, well, we've got, it's August 8th. We've got a lot of summer between now and August 8th and a lot of cleaning I think we could do. So anyway, folks who want to clean, you can let me know. And, but also our different committees. It's like, do we have to wait so long before we get everything clean? And there was one other thing. That, that's, that's enough for now. I, I wanted to build on what you're talking about, but I think the mayor says we can do that in our work session, so we'll just leave it for that.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Nothing further to add?
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
I just, I will just give a quick report on what we've seen with Mayor Carr. You and I are both sitting, working with this, setting the framework for the Woodland Park Recovery and Resilience Team. We've, it's been established as Councilmember Neil has stated, it's, it's generally prepared to open up to a greater group now and start getting feedback for potential ideas and recommendations for, for those, those areas of focus within that, within that group. And that would focus on business relief and service openings and everything you possibly think of about getting us reopened. As part of that, the recommendations have already been made. We're moving forward with the marketing, reopening marketing plan for the community with, with, in, in coordination with the chamber. So we anticipate in the next two to three weeks, we can have that out and it'll be promoting the entire community and our businesses and our services and everything we have to offer in the community. So just wanted to mention that, a date to be determined when we open it to the entire community. But I anticipate in the next 10 days, it's probably the likelihood of where we will be. I would just, I will clarify that I've seen, I have direction to provide city council feedback on the coronavirus relief funds and the limitations and constraints that those funds might have so that the city council could be better informed about how to use them in that, in that discussion and that, in that resiliency and recovery team. And also for Mayor Carr and his discussions with the commissioners.
Yeah, that's a piece I forgot to mention is next council meeting, we're going to put together a, we're going to talk about a council and give me the authority from the council to go forth and yes, and hopefully prosper. Is that a fair statement of facts? Thank you. So next council, we will talk about if people want to delegate the council because the, the commissioners are all going to be in the room, and so they can make a spontaneous decision. But there's no intent to have the entire council there. And so next meeting, we will have that on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have no script to go into executive session. Are we doing that tonight or no?
We can, it shouldn't take very long.
That's right, sir. It's right at the bottom of your agenda. You just need a motion. And then Mayor Carr, can I just have one moment really quick about the election?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you. No, that's okay. I'm not going to go through the whole calendar because it's three pages long. The key dates, particularly for the candidates in the audience that might be interested, I want them to hear is July 26th. We'll notify the county before then and let them know that we're going to be moving forward with this. July 6th through September 4th. That's the period of time the council has to put any other items on the ballot that they would like. Now that we're having something on the ballot, we could add other items if council desires, and it has to be done. That's the window of time, July 6th to September 4th. The last date I'd like to just mention is the petitions for the candidates will now become available. They'll be available in my office August 4th, and they will be circulated until August 24th. And more to come as time goes on.
Thank you. And I want to tell the public that everybody's welcome who's qualified to run for this seat. And it's not just the people who've shown interest before, but anybody new is welcome to run for the seat for the 14 months or so that the seat will be occupied. It is a continuation of a, of a tenure, of a seat term of former council member Sawyer. So it will expire in whenever that is, 2022, April 22. I will entertain a motion for us to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for discussion of a personal matter under Colorado Revised Statute, Section 24-64024F, and not involving any specific employee who have requested discussion of the matter in open session.
I'll second that. Can you state the whole thing?
I need the whole thing, okay. And any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personal policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, and we would have to check with the city manager for any clarification.
Is that the sufficient motion?
Second.
What it is, it's the purpose for it is to check in with the city manager. I just want to make sure that that's.
Oh, I, and with the purpose of to check in with the city manager.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Clear as mud. You have a second?
Yes.
Second. Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Case? Labarre? Neil?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I think we're going to do it here, right? Oh, we're going to do upstairs. Okay. Thanks for coming.